...
...
...
Eventually, eventually, they did. Because it's, um, the season, uh, so it's after all.
Do you want Oliver to say about the tablet bills that...
...
.........
... Well, obviously, yeah. What am I thinking? Oh, oh. Take a read for that, or I won't, I won't come to him then. No, because I think that it has to be...
Yeah. You want me to find out what you're doing?
No, I'm just... The way you're treating...
Those are all they continue to make.
No, it's just getting past our... The way they're treating us.
Uh... Six fifty-eight, half sixty-three. Oh, sixty-nine. Yeah, sixty-nine. Yeah.
But they'll come back with...
No, no! The motion. All right, I guess. Thank you. It's time now. It's not that, Jack, I'm on... Here we go, one, two, three, four.
Long do we talk, Jim? No, I don't think so.
Good evening! I'd like to welcome you to the South Bend County Council meeting Monday, April fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen, and our invocation will be given to us by Councilman from the Second District, Henry Davis. May we all bow our heads? Let me follow, we ask you, uh, for your presence of this meeting. We ask that we, as a body, are able to rule justly and according to the laws that we are governed by. We ask for your presence of this meeting. We ask that what we do will be, uh, an example for the rest of the city and the folks that we serve in Jesus' name we pray, amen. Thank you, may be pleased. Black for our city, black. Mr. John Wardy, please, all the way. And these guys, others. Mr. Henry Davis. Right, it's, uh... This is Shay.
Here.
Doctor Furlick. Doctor Byrne. Vice President Peter. President, Mr. Wardy. Mr. Furlick. Councilmember White.
Present.
President Dollar Day. President. Thank you. We now have our reports from the subcommittee on minutes. To the County Council of the City of South Bend, the second district, that kicked the minutes of the March twenty-four, twenty-fourteen meeting of the council and found them to be correct, therefore, we recommend the same deal of truth, signed Oliver Davis, David Byrne. Would you please?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. It is approved. Before we have our special business, we'd like to note that several things will not be heard tonight, and we be moved to, I believe, as May twelfth, two thousand and fourteen, and that will be Bill number fourteen twenty-three, Bill fourteen thirty-four, Bill fourteen thirty-five, Bill fourteen thirty-six, and Bill fourteen thirty-two. Oliver came in the Community Investment Committee. Are we finding out? No, no, no.
It's the first five, uh, ordinances that are resuming.
Hold on a second. That's in the... Eight fourteen, check it out, and roll on. Bill eight fourteen, Bill zero nine fourteen, Bill ten fourteen, Bill eleven fourteen, and Bill twelve fourteen. Thank you. Zoning and annexation.
Do you want us to specify what those are?
And we will specify what those are. Those are the accepts, special acceptance at Minor Street, Tapper Street, Vessel Street, Minor Street again, and Tapper Street.
Um, for Baca rentals.
Pardon?
For Baca rentals.
For Baca rentals. Are we at peace? Any comments?
Was it fourteen thirty-one?
Thank you. All right, now we can move down to our special business. Bill fourteen twenty-nine. And we'd like for our city club to please read Bill fourteen twenty-five.
A resolution in the County Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, in support of the twenty-fourteen Northwest Indiana MVA Muscle Walk, scheduled for Saturday, April twenty-sixth, twenty-fourteen.
How can you do this?
Slade, sir, Slade, authority, uh, here to tell the council members, uh, today you have a resolution forty-three thirty-six, fourteen, and those who are here to, uh, participate in this, uh, showing that you had previous, uh, proposals, those who are support. Before it is a resolution, uh, to the County Council of South Bend, the Lord asks, "South Bend County Council recognizes the MVA Muscle Walk, a series of fun, not attackable, global walk that's across the country, and is the largest event of the time in the United States." And the Lord asks, "Person walk in MVA muscle walk, too, number one, walk to honor adults and children with any of the three of the more than four forty muscle diseases in MVA's program, number two, walk to have fun and get some light exercise with our kids, grandparents, grandparents, students, corporate teams, and more." Number three, but mostly important, most importantly, we want to raise funds to help the Muscle Disease Association, also research and provide vital services to families affected by neuro-muscular disease. The Lord asks, "The two thousand and fourteen Northwest Indiana MVA Muscle Walk will take place at noon on Saturday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand and fourteen, at Gates Kim and Wyatt Avenue, located on the campus of Delta College, and our city's city mission one was every dollar raised of the fifty thousand dollar goal going directly to support the Muscle Disease Association Northwest Indiana. Now, therefore, this is all our County Council of South Bend has filed, section one, the County Council of the City of South Bend encourages everyone to consider participating in two thousand and fourteen Northwest Indiana MVA Muscle Walk on Saturday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand and fourteen, which will be one of the three Indiana walks taking place in Indiana this year. Section two, as noted by one of the past MVA's muscle walk participants, our favorite part of the muscle walk is coming together as communities to show our support in Indy Muscle Disease. On there, our large event, barter events, we remember that there are more people in this fight than just us, in full. Section three, the resolution shall be in full best, full force and effect from and after its adoption by County Council and by our people's agreement, and all councilmen are signed, are... Right now, I have a gentleman named Robert Henry that, um, wants to...
Thank you, Dr. Davis, for supporting this resolution, recognizing the twenty-fourteen MVA Muscle Walk. My name is Robert Henry, and the reason I stand and supported this resolution is because I am in my seventh year of a diagnosis of myotifischopy, which is a chronic inherited and multi-systemic muscle disease. And not only here for myself, I'm here to honor my father as well. My father died in June of two thousand and ten. Only upon his death did he feel that he was also affected by this condition. Since at the time, I have dedicated my time and energy to raising funds and awareness on a local level for the Muscle Disease Association. In two thousand and eleven, I was able to receive a resolution in Indiana House, sponsored by Representative Pat Bauer, recognizing those with myotifischopy. Most recently, I was able to obtain a confirmation from Governor Pence's office, setting April twenty-sixth, twenty-fourteen, as Indiana Neuro-Muscular Disorders Day. I chose this date on purpose. This is the date of the twenty-fourteen MVA Muscle Walk at Delta College, that this resolution seeks to recognize. I urge you to support this cause because it holds a special meaning, not just to me, but also to the many people who suffer from neuro-muscular disorders here in South Bend and surrounding areas. To tell you more about MVA, what they are about, and the muscle walk, I have brought with me Anita McQuine, Health Care Services Coordinator for the MVA of Northern Indiana.
Thank you, thank you for allowing me to have the opportunity. Uh, the MVA of Northern Indiana serves, uh, over forty-three different counties in Northern Indiana, so it's, it's quite a wide area. We had a local walk recently in the Portland area, the other local walk in the Indiana area is in Indianapolis. These walks provide funds for a lot of things that we, the MVA does, such as clinic programs, free equipment, free flu shots, summer camps for kiddos between ages of six and seventeen, and, most importantly, research. Uh, the MVA, while we want to assist our clients, we also want to find cures and treatments for diseases. Um, it's really important to us, and our, our new motto that we just recently started moving of our clinical conference in Chicago is "We are progress." Thank you so much.
Thank you.
As we've been, in the council, as we've been saying, as we're still looking for funding to make sure that we have a neighborhood park here at the city, we want to make sure to recognize folks who have these illnesses, these disabilities as well, so I hope that we'll be able to make progress with the neighborhood park, uh, idea.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. At this time, um, uh, would you like to know, any other comments from the council? We have moved to, um, public here. Anybody in the public would like to speak in favor of this resolution? Please rise and come up and share your thoughts. Seeing none? Anybody who would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none? To the council, look, I'm for favorable recommendations.
Second?
All in favor, say aye. Aye. It is carried.
Are you going to surprise Jim? Very hard for him to... Thank you.
We can stay around if you want.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to make an announcement that representing the city administration tonight is Chief of Staff Captain Ruth, Chief Swetek, thank you. Also with us tonight is Deputy Mayor, um, Mr. Mark Neal, who will now come and give us our three important guiding, um, city officers of the South Bend.
Thank you, Dr. President Davis. Good evening, councilmembers. Good evening, gentlemen. First, I'd like to start to, uh, to state again, the recent state of violence in our community. Instances that we've seen are horrible, and it's really should be helped. No parent should ever have to face the death of a child. So that parent is ninety and that child is seventy, and the child is two, fifty, or two and a half. Our other senior officials are very focused, um, changes that we are making to provide our local city. I appreciate the support of all councilmembers and our... As we've discussed, that we've been, there's been a change in patrol assignments, so we have more consistency of officers covering beats, so that they can be, both community outreach and citizens or residents can know the officers under beats. We've been investing in technology, shock powers, known to talk about frequently, what's allowed us to do. We've increased partnerships, keep speaking, because working with all the various enforcement entities to be sure that we are communicating and talking about what's going on, to making sure that we are taking steps to, to prevent violence from occurring, and there's the continuing to fund the group violence reduction initiative, and, uh, to take two thousand and fourteen to have people put the gun down. And we continue to ask all the community to work toward the violence, and report issues that they see of public safety, and that can be done anonymously, or talk about two eight, they can call two eight eight stops through there. And just again, we have fun, city administration's commitment, and other councils' commitment to make sure that we're in the safe community, and one that we all aspire to, in South Bend. Other notes, our corridors plan, there's been an effort in the budget that the council's council approved, that allows to look at revitalization of Lincoln Way West and Western Avenue, serves a guide to business and property owners, residents, developers, elected officials, and other persons in the Western Avenue, like corridors. There'll be a series of public meetings, April twenty-third to twenty-sixth. City's police partner with the Urban Enterprise Association on that effort, and we're also using our City Voice application. City Voice allows people to, uh, to write a phone message, there'll be, uh, uh, three, three minute, a hundred questions to do for residents, business owners, others perhaps unable to meet, make any of those meetings in April, late April, uh, to give us a feedback that you can call five seven four, six nine six, zero three one five. City Voice application is something developed by our Court for America fellows last year as part of dating the Rad House and Gas Force. We also want to highlight, uh, events over the weekend of police and fire departments, the Police Department honored, uh, officers and, 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 uh, employees of the fire, uh, Police Department, uh, for their service for our community and their extraordinary efforts. Uh, I want to thank them for, for that. Also, our fire department sold right targeting for five, uh, firefighters this past week, and they're bringing nice and everything. In addition, this past week, the building together took place, which, uh, this was the second weekend, the first weekend, April fifth, we, our tradespeople, we're two hundred fifty tradespeople in the city, worked on twenty-one houses to provide, uh, low income, particularly elderly folks to have a seat, stay in their house, make the community, make our kids stronger through single-family homeownership, appreciate their efforts, as well as people of, of hundreds of volunteers this past weekend, including cities personnel, urging on, on those houses, cleaning, cleaning, allowing them an opportunity again to, to have a house that they would, uh, uh, be pleased and continue to stay in their home and in the neighborhood. Uh, finally, this past week, I'd like to recognize our public works, parks, uh, employees, over a hundred of them were recognized in a luncheon sponsored by DTSK in our downtown businesses, for the tremendous job they did this winter, cleaning away the snow, keeping our street safe, knowing the challenges that we all face, and we've continued cleanup effort going on, and, uh, discussions of the fact that this is a continued effort that, uh, got caught up on our solid place, issues over the past, past couple of months, and we've continued to go for some streets coming up, and, uh, expect that to be completed from some of the base, uh, for some questions, so we'll have calls for our three one ones and stuff, and address that issue, and thank you, Deputy Mayor, for highlighting the work of this, this, this opposition. That's all, that's all.
Any questions, comments, letting up, or, if you may, yes, um, Council Deter.
Thank you. I'm glad you, uh, you mentioned, um, the law enforcement side of the increasing thing, that's what, uh, I have said every year since I've been elected to the council, the increase in beats, increase in personnel, and hopefully increase in any other monetary things that the police department would need to, to subsidize having more police officers on the street, so thank you for that.
Yes, um, Council, as far as I'm aware, um, I, I, I thought a lot of the work that the Code for America people did last year, I think we're just beginning to find out about some of it. These, uh, City Voice applications, I think, uh, particularly when they're used for surveys, it's important that the results are reported. Uh, I think too often, information is gleaned and set aside and, and used only by, uh, used by too few people. I think it's important that, uh, the results in a, in a factual, accurate basis be reported, so the community has a sense of, of how it's working. I, I appreciate that.
Councilman Eric, uh, and then Councilman Henry Davis?
But, uh, has there been any, uh, progress on the alley issue in that this winter we had real problems, you know, with the alleys? And has, uh, Eric or any of the people been involved in trying to solve that situation to actually have another winter like this year?
We'll continue to look at our solid ways, uh, uh, pick up activities, how we're doing it, how might we do it, uh, in a way that serves residents better, so that will be, uh, I, I would ask you to stay tuned, I'm excited, we have more to talk about that next thirty to sixty days.
Great, thank you.
Mark, thank you for, uh, showing up and giving us a reporter. Um, I want to tarry back a little bit to the, uh, the violence thing, I, I, I'm in full agreement with you, I think most people will be in agreement with you about the violence that needs to stop. Um, I, I attended church service yesterday, Sunday, obviously, and so I, I heard my pastor was speaking about the same thing, uh, we need to stop, but I, I, I think we'll be remiss if we don't pay attention to what the options are if we stop, or if those who are creating the violence stop. If, are there opportunities for employment? Are there things that, that we are going to provide more opportunity, uh, for individuals that do not want to participate in crime, however it feels like, you know, that just made me a lot more fun than to throw my thumbs today? And so, I think that, you know, when we begin to have these conversations about violence, and this is for, across the board, for anybody that's in certain leisure capacity, we have to begin to provide solutions. And so, you'll hear, um, next council meeting, I'm, I'm working right now on some information to, uh, put a resolution form for next council meeting, to discuss those things and, and be intentional about them. We're missing out, uh, huge, uh, part with our neighborhood centers, expanding services in those centers, making sure the staff is adequate in those centers, making sure programming is at a higher level than it has been before, you know, and the usage as well. Where's our partnerships with the school corporation? How are we interfacing with them and using their facilities maybe during the weekend? And allowing those facilities to be used by the neighborhood kids, whether it's a computer lab, or whether it's just a gymnasium? I don't know what's all available, however, I think that we're selling ourselves short when we just say, quit the violence. I think it's going to be the end goal in my incarceration. I understand that we may need more police, I'm not clear on that right now, but if the only thing that we can, uh, talk about as a result is more police and incarceration, we're doing the city more of this service, because that still has a cost to it as well. So they're just going to be locking people up and putting them in behind bars, and we still got to take care of them, right? And so that culture still is going to exist, so I, I, we need an end result that, uh, changes the culture, uh, within the city.
Councilmembers, I agree, um, we, people must put their guns down, violence must stop, uh, at the same time, we do need to provide qualified options, alternatives to youth people, alternative employment, job skills training, like, uh, what we do,
Any other more, uh, questions, comments, on my right, on my left? We'd like to thank Deputy Mayor Neal for taking the time to come and giving us your presentation. At this time, we have a motion to resolve into the committee of the whole. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay.
President Davis, I, uh, ask to remain in my seat, because the, uh, agenda for committee of the whole will be short. May I have a motion? So move. All those in favor? Okay, uh, motion carries. Um, the committee of the whole is now in session, this is the portion of the council meeting where the council sits as a committee. Proposed ordinances are read by title only, by City Clerk John Wardy. Uh, reports are then verbally given by the chairperson of the council standing committee to which the proposed ordinance was sent for an advisory review and recommendation. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member of the area plan will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report, and then the formal presentation followed by a public hearing. We ask that everyone turn their cell phones and other electronic devices to silent mode during this, uh, portion of the meeting, and additional rules governing the committee of the whole are set forth in the brochure that is available on the, um, uh, railing of council chambers, if you so choose. Council Attorney Sukansky, I am going to ask you, uh, since those eight fourteen through the twelve fourteen have been continued, can we make one motion?
One motion, I'll make the motion, uh, in this...
Thank you.
Uh, a motion to continue the following bills, which may fall into the return back to the zoning and association committee, Bill eight fourteen, Bill nine fourteen, Bill ten fourteen, Bill eleven fourteen, and Bill twelve fourteen.
Second, I have a motion on the second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Those bills will be continued until May twelfth. The next bill before, uh, the committee is Bill twenty-three fourteen. Uh, Clerk Forty, would you please read Bill twenty-three fourteen?
Public hearing on a bill to vacate the following described property, the first east-west alley, South of Fairview Street, from the east right-of-way line of Tayley Street to the first north-easterly, south-westerly alley, for a distance of three hundred and sixty feet, more or less.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Henry Davis, uh, the Public Works and Property Vacation, uh, Committee met earlier today, uh, what is the committee's recommendation?
I'm going to reserve my comments, someone else, uh, uh, chaired that committee, and I'm going to let the person, uh, speak.
As Vice President of that committee, I did chair, and we did send Bill eighteen fourteen to the, uh, full council as a, with a favorable recommendation.
And twenty-three fourteen also. Thank you. Um, thank you, Vice Chair Scott. Uh, may I, uh, ask that the presenter please come to the podium to tell us a bit more about Bill twenty-three fourteen?
Good evening. Uh, the purpose, uh, I want to...
Sir, would you need your name and address?
Oh, please.
Thank you. My phone working.
My name is Robert Roberts, uh, I live in twenty-six, twenty-four, West, West Avenue, uh, nineteen. And, uh, you're welcome. Go ahead. Okay, the purpose of, of why I need to, uh, to advocate is, uh, since I've never been used, I have thirteen years being in this place, this area, and, uh, okay, two years ago, I got this lot, like, like I explained, uh, a little today, uh, I never, I never knew that, I didn't know that, that, uh, I got this thing, I got this lot in back of my house, so I, uh, came to, to, uh, get the permission to rent, more connect, more , uh, lots, my, got my, oh, lot up there, new lot, so I know, uh, this one I need, uh, improvement of the, uh, sound, I need, uh, uh, okay, so.
Thank you, sir. Uh, uh, council members, uh, is there anyone here, uh, with any questions? Seeing none? No? Um, thank you, sir. Uh, now we will invite the, uh, public up to, uh, voice their opinion, so you may have a seat if you like. Uh, so is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of Bill twenty-three fourteen? If so, please come to the podium and share your thoughts. Seeing no one? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to Bill twenty-three fourteen? If so, please come to the podium and share your thoughts. Seeing no one? Um, uh, the bill comes back to the council.
Your favorite recommendation, second?
I have a, uh, motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Bill twenty-three fourteen goes to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Um, the next bill before the council is Bill eighteen fourteen. Clerk Forty, would you please read this bill?
That microphone is not working. People there in the back, when people are...
It's not working at all.
Does it work for you?
It's working.
Is it still not working? Why don't you give us a test on that, man? One, two, three.
Um, hopefully that helps. Uh, again, Clerk Forty, would you please read Bill eighteen fourteen?
Public hearing on a bill of the County Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, needing chapter four, article four, section thirty-eight, of the South Bend Municipal Code to revise provisions for licensing open air businesses, and to include donation boxes and rubber containers designed to accept or to distribute used items.
Uh, I'm the chair of the Personnel and Finance Committee, the Personnel and Finance Committee met, uh, earlier today and sends this bill to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
No. No. No recommendation.
Um, it's a substitute bill also.
A motion to hear a substitute bill, eighteen fourteen, uh, of...
A motion to hear substitute bill eighteen fourteen, uh, six...
So all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? May I please have a presenter for substitute bill eighteen fourteen?
Evening, council members. My name is Ann Cennell Nash. I'm an attorney with an office at nineteen fifty-one East Pottery South Bend. Previously, I had the pleasure of serving as assistant attorney and have spoken with representatives of Goodwill and other organizations about donation boxes. Actually, I've had the pleasure of working with Goodwill for many years as a assistant attorney and to ensure that legal dumping, that kind of things, is easily addressed. As I mentioned this afternoon during, uh, during the committee meeting, we have a very generous local community that gives to those in need. And for many years, we've had several organizations locally who have maintained collection boxes so that people could do that. And we have with us this evening a representative of Goodwill, its president, Ms. Polo, who addressed to the South Bend community and has hard copies of the photographs that she showed to you in the committee meeting. In recent years, we've seen a number of additional collection boxes arrive in our communities, and they're not all well maintained like those in Goodwill, St. Paul, and other local organizations. We've also had many good ones, and we have had the opportunity to talk with representatives of good, local, responsible organizations that do maintain the boxes well. What we are trying to do with this bill is to provide a licensing scheme to incorporate it into the, uh, the business licensing scheme that's already available and require that these donation boxes be clearly posting the names of the organizations and that the boxes be monitored and emptied every seven days at various rates, that there be a contact person in the hills of county or in a joining county who can respond to any complaints about overloading and a response within twelve hours. We'd ask for a minimal licensing fee that would not be burdensome to these organizations. During this afternoon's council meeting, I was asked to provide some additional language that would specify that a decal would be affixed to the collection box, and it also provides that there would be sanctions for builders to count in the decal. I provided that to you, to council attorney, Sikansky, here. I would be happy to answer any questions that you have, but I would also ask you to use our rest call.
Thank you, Attorney Nash. Council, yes?
Did we get the part where, are we going to come up with a tag for each? Okay.
Yes, that is essential language, especially for tail industry and the, uh, service in terms of providing for, uh, designing the toilet business, which is a major economy, we added language that, upon granting the license, the city would be able to have that affixed to the front of the collection box. And it would have the front number and the date that expires. A licensed holder would be responsible for, particularly, that's the front of the donation box, as a type of decal, being subject to sanctions pursuant to chapter four, chapter sixteen, and including capital qualification.
Would those be numbered with locations? Or just going to be a tag?
It's not, it's how itself, that's the point of the, but as part of the, uh, the licensed holder, applied of the license count, identify the place where the, uh, the box would be.
Like, theoretically, someone might want to push it in portage with number seventeen. Would they all be numbered? And it's because there may be a point where someone just would pull a tag off and put it on another box, so we can coordinate the number with the location?
I, I, I haven't, yeah, that's...
Okay.
I would think that the licensing body would, uh, probably...
And then with code, or who, or building or code, would they have the master list?
I probably, I wonder, would those like to have that?
Okay.
And there's a lot of coordination between the licensing bodies.
Right, because I would also adjust to get that to the police department, because the officer on the street, as you know, probably be the first one to get the complaint, so they can, right out of the gate, know whose it is and where. Thank you.
Your councilman, your councilman Scott, and then councilman Henry Davis.
Would the additional cost coming up with the sticker, and that is the fee still at twenty-five dollars?
That, that is my suggestion, um, as the council chair, as we would engineer, all license schemes should be evaluated, and so, probably, for that idea, we'll, with the control room's office, find out what exactly what cost is and issue that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Davis?
Now, is that per box, or is that per organization?
That's per box.
Per box. Was there any thought or frame of thought that maybe the lot that's holding that particular box would have to pay the fee? Like, I've seen several at different gas stations around, and instead of the organization, instead of us being in contact with the organization, maybe the person that the box, that owns the land where the box is at will be more accountable, because they usually have more of an investor's interest than someone outside the community. Are you following what I'm saying? So I, I don't know, I think it would probably be cleaner if the person that owns the land that it sits on, because usually they're local people, would be charged the fee versus just the boxes, the people that own the box, because there's more of a direct contact with that person versus the one that may be outside. I don't know. I mean, I personally, I'm not really, I'm strong support of always tagging fees to these things. We've been doing this over the last couple of years. Motas, we, I mean, I can go on for days about the fees that we should be attached to new things. I'm not in favor of that, but I just think that'd be probably cleaner. But, because someone would have to say, okay, great, put the box there, you can collect donations.
Uh, actually, uh, right now, property owners are responsible for what fund their property is at, uh, for times, you know, the department's phone, of course, when the waste apartment has to respond to illegal dumping situation, you know, the person who owns the property, you know, the next cause, the, uh, first entity that's with the box there is actually, you know, lot, lot empty, lot, whatever. Um, I think that the trend is then, uh, to license the curse to portions of the nation, and then that's a privilege from the collection, and, and essentially, they're doing this similar to these other outdoor businesses, so that's why we came up with this as an idea. Certainly, whatever the council's preferences and, and it may help afford to also appear for, uh, these types of organizations that, uh, sit by.
Well, how much of a role does a legal dumping team play into this? Because it's, obviously, we're talking about illegal dumping. Um, we, the city, obviously, a few years back, was able to put together, and I think you were part of that as well, the legal dumping team that would go out and clean up sites that had illegal dumps on it. Do they, are they engaged in this particular process, or is it, you know, the people that own the site have to clean it up?
As, um, as I recall, the illegal dumping problem, um, that would basically a cleanup more than being, and of itself, an investigation. However, traditionally, if, if someone was, was found to be doing illegal dumping, we were able to, um, to sue against that person, to find that person, and obtain judgments against them and that kind of thing. Unfortunately, with these things, you often can't find out who did the dumping.
Right.
And so that's, and that's part of the reason we want to place the burden on the person or the entity that, that has the collection box, to make sure that they get out there every seven days at the various, Goodwill will get out there sometimes twice a day, but they get, get out there very often and, and be, uh... Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Nash. Any further questions?
Negative.
We will now turn to the... Sure.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions, and they may be replied, wasn't handled myself, and I do have pictures if I can, with technology in the city, so it's hard.
You can talk right inside of my colleague, towards you.
Yeah, is that better?
Yes.
Oh, I have a mother's voice, I may not even need it, Mike.
Oh, yeah, that's good, thank you, that sounds good.
We appreciate the opportunity to talk about this. Donation boxes are a lifeblood for many local organizations, because what we get in those boxes, we use for revenue to provide, and the agencies that we have worked with, or in working with, Ms. Nash, none of us receive local government dollars to do our service. And so I think that's very important. I think it's also very important that, if you look at these pictures, these are all either on Western Avenue or Lincoln Way, just coming into our community. And the one that has took over, it was that way for at least three months during the winter. Other times, couldn't get to it because of all the snow. The other two I took just last week on Lincoln Way, where those boxes are in terrible condition, they have graffiti on them, and as we're working to beautify our city, I ask that that's really what we want, for people to see when they first enter into our community. As well as also, over the summer, one of the, uh, the, uh, having had a couch sitting outside of it for at least three weeks before anything was done with that couch. And so while those boxes are only designed for touch down, I understand that, people are going to use them as a municipal house trash as well. So I was asking, not many consider this, um, several agencies, government, sports, forests, and the community, here, as well, in support of this ordinance. We are happy to pay the fee for the boxes. We already have to, when you talk about, um, the local communities, we have to often work with landlords that are not in our community, because the strip malls are often owned by somebody outside, so we can't, it's not that we get permission from like Martin Supermarket to put these boxes on. If they're leasing the land, we have to go to that landlord to get permission. So they are not local, um, so it would be easier probably for the organization to maintain them and have to license them.
Thank you. Any questions out of the...
Do you have to pay winter's insurance when you do something like that?
Yes, we do. And I will tell you, we are actually, probably, there's three or four places where we actually have to pay a fee to put our box down, so.
Councilman Henry Davis?
So do you think the fee should be higher?
No, I think the fee at twenty-five, I think that that's affordable even for the smaller agencies that utilize the boxes, um, so I think the twenty-five dollars is fine. I don't think that should be fine, but I think that the organization, I'm supportive of the organization paying that fee. Because it really is on them to make sure it's clean.
You know, I heard what you said, I'm just, you know, going back at that. I just don't see a huge investment in twenty-five dollars. I, I just don't.
Okay.
It doesn't prompt me to...
Change your behavior.
Change my, change my behavior. A hundred dollars would, a hundred and fifty dollars, you know, and I'm not saying that's what should be adopted. What I am saying is that it makes you think twice about your responsibility if the fee is higher than twenty-five dollars. It just almost just seems like, again, we're doing something that maybe will change people's behavior. Um, that box is on second, second district, in second district, I've seen that box now. You couldn't understand why the person that owned the lot wouldn't just pick it up, they would look at it every day?
Well, everything that I know, they are not local, they are quite a distance away, and so the amount of time that they're in the community, I can't answer that question.
No, I was just talking to people that actually own the lot.
Oh, that own the lot?
Yes, I think there's a car, a car lot there, there's a, uh, right there, there's like a quickie mark or, or something right there, it's, yeah, and they're going in the business every day and walking like that.
Are there any further questions? Seen none, uh, we will turn to the public at this point. Um, is there anyone here from the public wishing to speak in favor of substitute the eighteen fourteen? Please state your name and address.
My name is Trina Hemrickson. I represent IICT Michigan and also One World Center, which is our training place in Wajah, which is about thirty minutes from here. We are one of the local organizations that collects clothes and shoes in this area. We have about six hundred bins in Michigan, Ohio, and Indiana. We have done this for seven, eight years. I would gladly share with you that just last week, we got our permits to do business in the, um, in the city of Battle Creek, which is one of the cities that have an access and ordinance, just like the woman from Goodwill was talking about. It's a very uncomplicated, easy ordinance that we fully support. Being non-profit, we train and send volunteers that work in Africa for the profits that we get from these clothing collection bins. It is very important for charities to be able to work and do what they're doing with collecting clothes and shoes. In fact, last year, my organization diverted two million tons of clothes, shoes, toys, brick of that, away from the Midwest landfill. Instead, these clothing, these shoes were used by local people who do not have the opportunity that we have to go into a store and buy new clothing. It's used by people in third world countries, Nicaragua, Guatemala, Africa. You might not know this, but seventy percent of the world's population cannot afford going into a store and buy new clothing. Think about that for a moment, seventy percent. So the charitable purpose that we can do by offering people an opportunity to recycle and reuse their clothes, their shoes, instead of throwing them out on the landfill is very, very important, not only for the charitable purpose, but also for environmental purpose. And we think that our boxes serve a very important, um, mission by giving people an opportunity to go and deposit their clothes, when, for example, the local strip store is closed, they can always get to a clothing collection bin. So obviously, for, from our standpoint, we consider them as local as they come, and we would like to basically back such a ordinance. We work well with the city of Battle Creek, they have an ordinance, they, uh, charge us twenty-five dollars. We need to get the signature of the landlord or the business owner, and I wish I had a PowerPoint, I could have shown you the sticker that they gave up, that we have placed now on our boxes. They are on the side of this sheet of paper. They say, you know, uh, city of Battle Creek, permit so-and-so, date, you know, from this page to this page, and they give the address, so that nobody can peel this sticker off and put it on another bin. So it's a very simple process, and we are, we have been happy to work with the city, and we will be very happy to work with the city of South Bend. I would also echo the people who spoke before me, that it's good that the fee is with the organization. Um, the business owners, and now I can only speak for ourselves, we are a non-profit, we don't pay a fee. When we get into a gas station and ask that person, the owner, if he so kindly will have one of our clothing collection bins on the property, um, he or she does that on the good of their heart, we don't say they need, that it is a good thing to share materials to give when we have too much. And so to give them as, as, you know, saying, you need to pay for this, it's going to be very difficult for them, you know? I don't want to shift that burden to the business owner. That burden can be with us. We can pay a reasonable fee, of course, as a non-profit, twenty-five dollars is good for us. It could also be forty, you know, but you, please configure that... So we have basically summed up. I have a copy of the Battle Creek selling, and here I understand you are working with the forage selling, which is fine and good, it's really the same. And in that way, we will be more than happy to work together with the city of South Bend to implement a system that works so that we can actually control these boxes. And you can all say that sometimes, as I said before, sometimes there are boxes on the market that are run by salesmen, maybe it's a canter sticker on there, maybe it's a platform for cute dogs on the box, but they are actually full profit and they line their own profit. So it's very important that the stickers set clearly non-profit on our boxes, the sticker basically also sets our tax ID number, our address, our phone number. It reads like a pamphlet. So I think I'm ready by the time. We are in favor of such a regulation. We would like to work together with the other local non-profit in South Bend. I am so sorry that this drop, and I do believe it's my organization, you can just get that out right away, where the box will flame on the side. Sometimes it happens that our boxes are simply not over, but the head is smoked and the sofa. So, yes, for sure, I am not going to say that that's far off. That probably was off because I could see a good picture.
Confession is good for the soul.
Huh?
A confession is good for the soul.
Yes, 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 yes. We are only thirty minutes away, and we collect our boxes on the weekly basis. And, you know, since we do have a good relationship with our cycle, we give them newsletters, we update them on what they are part of supporting, they also feel free to call and say, hey, help me, you know, help us hopefully a lot of donations and, you know, the books are full. We can respond to that. We go and give the box. So, yeah, okay. Thank you so much for allowing me.
When it comes back.
My name is Brian Lloyd, I'm with Planet A. I'm sure I can beat that, but I'm going to try. Let me clarify, we're the yellow boxes out there, and we wholeheartedly support regulations, putting in something that the city of South Bend has control, as well as puts restrictions on the donation boxes to make sure that they are clean and they are very clear to the public from a funding standpoint, who they are, the five hundred and sixty secret charity in the county of Fort property organization, who they're holding off of their boxes. It's really important. At Planet A, we've done numerous regulations with communities, cities, as well as consulates, and we actually have some of those ordinances here and with us to provide. And we've done with very large cities, for example, the city of Cleveland, Ohio, as well as very small, really small population of people. We've worked very closely with the city council of those cities to enact an ordinance that works for everyone, both nonprofit, for-profit, and anyone else, there's the folk recyclers and so forth in certain cities. So we've helped them enact it with the proper fees, I hear twenty-five dollars. We leave the ordinance, we're the hundred dollars. Whatever works as far as the city and the expense related to the city, that's what we work with as far as the city can pay, what they deem as appropriate. One of the things that we have, we see in the language that was presented today, which we completely agree with, with regulation, however, one of those, one of the regulations we see in there, or the verdicts we see as far as residing in the county, as Nina, it's a half hour away, we're a little further away, two and a half hours, however, we're here weekly, as well as sometimes twice a week, to manage our boxes. However, we don't reside in the county or top ten, which effectively this ordinance would push us out. However, as you go to regulation or an ordinance, you put it in there to make sure that the bid operators are doing the right thing, they're cleaning their boxes, they're there on a regular basis. And if you're there, if you can get there within twelve hours, which when you're only a couple of hours away, or you're there every week, it can happen, it should be no issue. And if, you know what, you can't do that, you know, one, the owners either kick you out, they say, I don't want that box, or struggle to be enough, or the city says, you know what, you need to be out. And then, and related to regulation, it's incorporated in that, in that regulation saying that you have to do these things for the box providers compliance, and then eventually get termination of the permit. And that's how things operate, or how we've done it with other cities. So I'm just here to say that we are in support of it, but with some certain language in there provides us to push us all of the South Bend area where these donations are very critical for our organization. So, again, we really appreciate, I really appreciate guys giving us opportunity here and as well as looking at this ordinance. And I'm just going to provide you some sample ordinances to take a look at, that, and potentially maybe delay this to really look at the big picture here, because we have several ordinances for law, that really kind of makes it fair for everyone, or appropriate for everyone in, that does a non-profit work.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak in favor, in favor of bill, substitute bill eighteen fourteen? If so, please state your name and address.
Anthony Nugent, I'm the managing and director of Home World Center in Waukegan, Michigan. The five hundred and thirty, the five hundred and twenty five in front of you. And I just wanted to emphasize the importance of non-profit organizations that are addressing the social need of our communities, building stronger communities, dealing with the situation of poverty, education, health, and human rights. And we do come every week, or more often, South Bend, not only to collect clothes and shoes, but we have been part of supporting the Purple Port in Michigan, bring local vendors and farmers together to bring produce to residents here. We have been reading for Seder Chavis Day in the public school system, bringing the importance of reading good books to children in the public school. And we have also been working and supporting our shuttle of donor community garden, getting it ready for this spring. So we do have a presence in South Bend besides our food boxes, but I just wanted to make you aware of that. Of course, the information is in the back of my, I appreciate this opportunity, and also I look forward to a cooperation where we can have a good fruitful future together. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of substitute bill eighteen fourteen? If there are others, please come up to the podium and stand behind this gentleman.
I'm Robert Thompson. I am also with Planet A. I've been with Planet A about four years, and I'm currently working as a part-time employee, basically volunteer. But I'm here to work with Brian and Tim Holt, if I like, these are the brochures that we refer to. The white document I left with the clerk is the forage presence that was made earlier to forage children, which our company went very hard and, you know, assistance and everything. Right, Illinois, the settlement was obviously agreeable to the policy of our jurisdiction, but also was legally sensitive, a legal, very critical, that whatever is finally resolved we passed, it's very, I guess legally sensitive, not socially correct. And I have been involved in some of these statutes, many of these twelve different ordinances, but I would say we have fourteen licenses that we cooperate with various towns, like, I was actually tied in on South Bend, opposed to, basically, a great deal of town. My only final point would be I would suggest that counsel be very deliberate, my profession, and we only have one chance to pass an ordinance like this, and just so we want to make it legally correct as possible.
Thank you. Anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of substitute bill eighteen fourteen? If so, please come to the podium. Seeing no one, is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to substitute bill eighteen fourteen? If so, please come to the podium and provide your name and address.
Harry King, Governor of Waukegan, South Bend. This is the first opportunity I actually had to hear about this at all. I didn't pay attention to the agenda before I got here. I don't like this parking because the people who dump outside the boxes don't care what kind of sticker or license is on the box. And you gave us a point a little earlier about changing people's behavior. By putting a hundred dollar fee or twenty-five dollar fee or any fee whatsoever on the owner of the box will change nothing with regard to people who just say, well, I don't know what else to do with this chair, or couch, or sink, or pile of clothes, or whatever, and so it just gets dumped. It could get dumped in my alley if it doesn't get dumped outside the box, and that happens. I cleaned my alley last week from, you know, somebody just dumped whatever furniture out there. So, there are some things about this bill that I think are appropriate and good. You probably should have something that says that this company, whether profit or non-profit, has permission to set boxes in this city. You could probably assess them a fee of ten dollars, twenty dollars, whatever it is, to say, here's who we are, here's what we're doing, here are the locations we propose. They get one permit, and they can post it on every box that they have themselves there. It is really important that the box clearly identifies the organization who owns it, not just donate clothes here, or donate furniture, whatever, who are they, where are they located, and what's their purpose. There should be a phone number on the box. You should mandate that it has, if this box is overfilled, please contact, and a responsible person will do that. Even the property owner, you might notice, oh, there are some things that are overflowing, they could call the organization today, they'll know that they've gotten more donations than they can handle, or they've gotten donations that are not appropriate. Somebody could dump junk outside just hoping that somebody will take care of it. You could say that there must be a purity guard to pick up. Now, for some organizations, you might need to be picked up, picked up every day, or at least once a week. For an organization like Better World Books, that box might not fill up for a month, maybe two months. Or on the day that your university students are cleaning up their apartment, they might fill up over a weekend. I'm not speaking officially at behalf of Better World Books, but I will say that my son, Aaron, was the first employee of Better World Books. He's not an owner, he's the first employee. And one of his projects was to design and get green boxes placed around our community. And they are for-profit organization with the idea of taking as much of your property as possible and using it to build schools and promote literacy worldwide. Those are things on behalf of a for-profit, and they do clean up their books. And I say thanks to all the credit unions and fire department and any place else where there's a Better World Books box in the court. Do you legally, you know, have a hundred dollar permit on every box to make sure that if people dump a whole bunch of old videotapes that nobody can possibly use, and they're probably not even appropriate, is that going to ensure anybody can film those things, you know, around the box if the box is full? No. I think, seriously, you should take this bill back to the community and think about other ways to enforce it. For what? If there's a violation, well, the police department drives by, code enforcement drives by, anybody drives by and says, oh, there's a mess here, the box is tipped over, or there's too much stuff outside the box, well, one, call the owner. You can tag it, if there's a couch outside there, put a tag on, if that couch is sitting out there for more than two days, or even if there's even one single rainstorm, that box is ruined, well, then, pick up the stuff, send it to one of those big trucks over in South Bend, at least, and pick it up immediately. It's untethered, it's hanging up in the landfill anyway, what else could happen? If the box isn't properly maintained, tag it, just put a big dumpster nearby, pick it up, and take it someplace, and just, you know, put it in powder, until the neighbors have to take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Attorney Nash, this is the rebuttal portion. Would there be some responses to Mr. King's suggestions?
And, and, could you include the reside in the county issue that was also there?
I'm sorry?
The reside in the county, there was a person that spoke like before that said that they would be eliminated if they, if they reside in the county, two counties over kind of thing.
I appreciate the folks from Planet A very kindly, sharing their thoughts with me ahead of time.
Can you bring that mic down a little? Yeah, right in front of you.
Can you hear me now?
Not really. Right, come on, I can't get over here.
The people from Planet A did share their concern about being residing in this county. Please note that the language in the ordinance would imply that they live or have a business within the St. Joseph County or an adjoining county. And I do think that, like many property owners, responsible property owners from outside of the community, or outside of the state, or even the country, they could very easily have a responsible person within this county or in adjacent counties who could be responsible for responding to complaints, get here within twelve hours, and monitor the place every, at least every seven days. Just like the good, well-meaning property owners who have rental agents or property maintenance people, we could also have that kind of thing if the organization does not have a local office or a local home. So I don't think we're putting them out of business. I think what we're asking them to do is have somebody assigned to ping that here in a relatively short time. The concern that I think was raised with respect to the amount of, please note this, ordinance is within Chapter Four governing all licensing, and the sanctions that are available in Chapter Four would be available for this kind of violation, just like any other. Under Section Four, fifteen of the code, a fifty dollar fine can be issued under Section Four. Sixteen, the city can refuse to issue a permit, it can suspend or revoke a permit. So those are the sanctions that were concerned about. The idea of the forty-five dollars is cover the city's cost of administration at the level. I answered your question, I think.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. So the public portion of this bill is now closed. So I have a motion and a second, all those in favor. Can you have a voicemail, John?
and the sanctions that are available through, uh, chapter four would be available for, uh, this kind of violation, just like any other. Under section four, fifteen of the code, a fifty dollar fine can be issued under section four sixteen. The city can refuse to issue a permit, it can suspend, or revoke a permit. So both of the sanctions that, that were concerned about. The idea of the forty-five dollars is to cover the city's cost of administration at the level. I, I've answered your question. It's, uh, so, yeah.
Thank you, uh, Mrs. Nash. Um, so the public portion of this bill is, uh, now closed. Do I?
Sorry, I just want to give you a couple of things.
So, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
All right.
Can we have a, um, a roll call, John?
Uh, certainly.
So, uh, all those in favor?
Oh, Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Nay.
Mrs. Shea?
Nay.
Dr. Furley?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Dieter?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Albert Davis?
Aye.
Nine ayes. One nay.
Motion, Carrie. Substitute bill eighteen fourteen will be sent to the full council with the same rule recommendation. Um, so, uh, I ask for a motion to rise and report to the full council.
One more.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Second by the term of eight.
Second. I have motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, um, motion, Carrie.
Thank you. Full council, the doctor is present, and we would like to ask this to be awarded to have further readings of Bill twenty-three fourteen.
Good reading, all of them, following this draft progress. First to these well-styled, south of Fairview Street, and throughout the east right-of-way of Hayley Street to the first north-esterly, south-western alley, for a distance of three-hundred-and-sixty feet more or less.
Passage of Bill twenty-three dash fourteen.
So, I'd like to take your place. Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
Dr. Furley?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Dieter?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Albert Davis?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thank you. So, could you read now Bill eighteen, substitute bill eighteen fourteen for the third time?
Third reading, all of them, the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, many chapters clear out Article Four, Section thirty-eight, South Bend Municipal Code, to revise provisions for licensing of air businesses and to include donation boxes and other containers designed to accept or to distribute, use that.
Move for passage.
Now, a motion for amendments.
As the words of the committee, it's a whole, some of them say aye.
I oppose the same sign. Please carry it. Now, we have the move for passage of amendment eighteen fourteen. Now, Mr. Woody, can you take the roll? Mr. Henry Davis?
I want to support it because I have some caveats, but I have to say nay because we've ram-motting the motions through, but I, I just want to, uh, nay. Not because I'm against it, but because I think it needs more, I think it needs more meat, more, more teeth in it.
Mrs. Shea?
I would have liked amendments too, but I would support it. Aye.
Dr. Furley?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Vice President?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
And President Davis?
Aye.
Eight ayes, one nay. Thank you. Now, we look toward, um, our resolutions. If we have to, please read Resolution fourteen twenty-three. Fourteen twenty-three, a resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as fifty-two twenty-four West Western Avenue, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year real property tax abatement for Claretwood Healthcare. Thank you. Can we now have a report from Mr. Gavin Furley regarding the community investment committee?
Yes, community investment, and we send this forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Now, can we have a presenter for Bill fourteen twenty-three? Please, please state your name and address, and give us a brief synopsis of your, um, conduct.
My name is Richard Kennedy, and I reside at Area Twenty-One Jackson Street, and I build a name free. Um, I represent Barack the Haven, through votes to rehabilitate the facility located at fifty-two forty-four Western Avenue, in the amount of three-point-two-six million dollars. Uh, we see the tax debate. Uh, the city can create up to one, uh, city of those jobs to be, uh, uh, full-time officials. Our annual budget for a thousand facilities, two-point-five billion. Uh, building schedules open in October, November, this year, um, but no time schedule for October twenty-fourth. Uh, we ask to grant the abatement and bring, um, economic opportunities into West West Avenue.
Thank you. Are there any missed questions from our presenter? Negative. Saying none? Um, now, we'll move to our public portion. All of who would like to speak in favor of Bill number fourteen twenty-three, please rise and state your name and share your thoughts. All those who would like to speak in opposition, please do likewise. Public hearing is now closed. Now, for the council, move for passage. Second, now, if you, you, if you're ready, could you please take the roll? Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
Dr. Furley?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Dieter?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
And President Albert Davis?
Aye.
That would be nine ayes. So, that's good. Now, could you please read, potential listener, fourteen thirty.
A resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as nineteen-oh-two West Sample Street, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a two-year real property tax abatement for Lippert Components Manufacturing Inc.
Thank you. Since that's confirming, can we have a presenter? State your name, address, and floor that you are.
This bill is part of a community investment force towards building. Um, before you have a term resolution for Lippert Components to the two-year tax abatement offered through Indiana State Code, um, this was one of the incentives utilized to incent Lippert to call the St. Joseph County South Branch and open a, a new facility. Uh, facility will create three-hundred-and-eighty-two jobs over the next ten years, where total taxes be evaded approximately six-hundred-and-sixty thousand over a two-year period. Total taxes paid approximately one-to-one.
Thank you. Are there any questions from Mr. Fielding? No, you're seeing none. Then we now open up the public hearing. Those who would like to speak in favor, please come forth, state your name, address, and share your thoughts. Those who would like to speak in opposition, now come forth, and do likewise. Public hearing is now closed. Move for adoption. Second, Mr. Woody, would you please take the roll?
Yes, Dr. Furley?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Vice President?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
And President Albert Davis?
Aye.
Three, nine ayes. Thank you. Now, do we have a motion to continue Bill fourteen thirty-one to May twelfth? So, move. Second, all of them say aye. I oppose the same sign. Please carry it. Now, Mr. Woody, can you read, um, Resolution fourteen thirty-two?
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, providing preliminary approval of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of providing certain economic development facilities for Noble Americas' South Bend Ethanol LLC.
Thank you. Mr. Gavin Furley, can you please give us a report from the, um, committee that you chaired?
Sure. Community investment met today, and we send this forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Now, can we have a presenter? Please state your name and address, and, um, give us a brief synopsis.
Thank you. The council, my name is Rich Yall, and we go off on a favorable basis. We have an offer that's, uh, fourteen hundred, uh, eventual. Uh, the, uh, resolution that you have for you would grant, uh, on a preliminary basis, uh, the approval of the common developed revenue bonds for the Noble Americas' facility, Ethanol Production Facility. The bond proceeds will be utilized for the acquisition and installation of various processing and equipment, um, required for the, uh, that facility. Uh, it is estimated that this project would bring, uh, fifty-two new jobs to plant. Uh, like other economic development revenue bonds, this does not leave any liability on the part of the city. It is solely the responsibility, uh, it would remain while the bonds are outstanding, it is sole responsibility of the company, in terms of making, uh, principal and interest payments on the, on the bonds. The resolution proposes a maximum bond amount of twenty-five million dollars. Um, and, uh, to, uh, proceed, uh, to the, uh, actual completion of this process, we would, uh, return to the council and present to you a detailed bond ordinance that set out the details of, of those bonds. So, we would, uh, ask for your favorable consideration in terms of answering questions that you have. There are several representatives who have been here to answer questions.
What timeframe are you looking at, uh, returning regarding the, with the bonds?
Uh, I, I think we would probably, uh, in, in the next, uh, certainly in the next couple of months, yeah, if you're outside. Thank you.
Sure. Just as a matter of.
Good. Councilmember?
As a matter of public effort, I had asked it earlier in committee, but for the sake of our guests, um, there is absolutely no liability on the city's part, um, should the company defaults.
Uh, clear, um, while, while the, uh, economic development commission has approved the city's lending in its name, uh, in no way, the document that you have in front of you explicitly states that there's no liability. If, in fact, the bonds were issued and there were default, the actual bond ordinance would provide that, that creates no liability, uh, on, on the part of the city in any way. There's no pledge of revenue, there's no pledge of any moral obligation on, on the part of the city. So, it's solely, the bonds are sold solely on the, um, economic viability of the company, and have nothing to do with the economy of the city.
The other question I had was, since this is a for-profit company seeking to, um, secure, uh, not-for-profit, um, status, uh, that is allowable by law?
The, um, the, the federal government has, has provided, uh, certain types of financings can, would, would be, uh, permitted to be issued on a tax exempt basis. In terms of this particular financing, uh, the proportions of the facility that, um, this equipment's going to be devoted to actually meet solid waste requirements. So, uh, the federal IRS regulations do provide that this kind of financing can be provided on a tax exempt basis. And certainly, though, e- even though the company's a for-profit company, it is encouraging the use of this financing so that, uh, this type of facility can be, uh, encouraged. Really, it's really encouraging the, uh, upgrading and financing of solid waste facilities in communities. That's the rationale behind the federal regulations.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our presenter?
Yes, uh, Councilman Davis, yes. Um, thank you so much for your time. I, I'm, on my news, I read a lot of things, uh, and so there was a publication, it was a national publication, uh, I can't recall the name of it, but they were talking about, about the city of South Bend actually investing in ethanol, and that's how it was messaged. Based upon your comments, that obviously that would be untrue, and if that's, uh, and also, the second question today is that, does this actually, um, could this potentially have an adverse effect on a bond rating, if default happens?
No. Let me, let me answer the, the last question first. It has absolutely no impact. Uh, the, uh, the issuance, and there's a long history of the issuance of, uh, economic revenue bonds by the city of South Bend. Uh, in fact, there's a period of time where probably, um, the city was more active in this area than probably any other, any other, um, city in the country. But it, it really has, uh, no impact at all. There, in the worst case of the default in these bonds, it is, uh, solely the company's liability. In many cases, the bonds are sold with a letter of credit behind them, and it's the company's letter of credit. And it is, the bond is solely marketed on the strength of the company's credit, and it has nothing to do with. Basically, it, it's, the, the legal term for this type of bond is a conduit. It's a conduit issue, but the city isn't really a conduit. The city is lending its name to it, but, but in lending its name does not have any of the exposure or liability that you would have typical bond that you would prove. Uh, in terms of investing in ethanol, uh, that is really not accurate. I think what the, through the provisions of these funds, uh, through the, the tax abatement, also, the, there is an investment in the plant, there's an investment in the, the jobs that will be there. And I think you know that having that plant in operation has numerous ancillary benefits to the city and to the surrounding neighborhood that, uh, otherwise, uh, needs to be addressed. It could be a long-term issue in addressing that the city would have to face.
Okay. Last question. Is there a cap on economic, uh, bonds such as these per, per city basis, or are we allowed to, uh, participate in, I wonder if a number of deals based upon, uh, the value of someone's credit, or the company's credit?
There, there is a requirement, uh, to receive an allocation from the state. The state does have a cap, okay? And we, we sense this place, and we would be falling well under that cap. But, uh, the next process, in addition to, uh, the filing of an ordinance, of a detailed ordinance setting out the terms of the bonds that would complete the process, the company would also request an allocation from the Indiana Finance Authority to approve an allocation of these bonds. So, there is oversight also on the state level.
So, is there a number associated with that cap?
I, I, uh, there is a number. I could, I, I could, I, I'll be able to obtain it, but I don't have it written down.
I think Mr. Fielding came behind you. May, may I say something? Can you make that?
Two thousand thirteen, the bond cap was six-hundred-and-seventy-four million, and the bond, joint bond council with Edgar Danger, and they inquired, and this, the state had only utilized just over two-hundred million of that cap.
So, it's per state, not per city?
Correct.
So, we had a volume cap for the entire state.
Okay. Right. Are there any other questions from the council members? At this time, seeing none, now, opening up the public. Those who would like to speak in favor of this resolution, please come forth and state your name and address, and give us your thoughts. Those who like to speak in opposition, do likewise. Public hearing is now closed. Second. Uh, Mr. Woody, could you please take the roll? Vice President Dieter?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye. Thank you for your investment.
Councilmember White?
Thank you. And I.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
You know, uh. Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
Dr. Furley?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
President Albert Davis?
Welcome to the Sixth Street in Ohio.
Nine ayes. Okay, um, Bill fourteen thirty-three, could you please read that bill?
A resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as thirty-two oh-one West Coward Street, to be an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for Noble Americas' South Bend Ethanol LLC.
Since that's confirming, you would like to ask the presenter to please come forth?
Sure.
Fielding again, and you'll state your name and, and, address, and proceed.
First, we're, 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 before we fill it. Um, before you have, uh, the, 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 as was the personal property tax abatement for Noble Americas' Ethanol LLC, uh, this was done several weeks ago in conjunction with a potential for a real property tax abatement, uh, as, as a means of allowing the plant to get help in the operational and the workers to be able to begin work while the company determined which type of payment was of most value to that. Uh, under the personal property tax abatement, uh, total taxes created will still remain at fifty, eleven million, that is the new personal, new personal property, personal property, and/or refurbished personal property, uh, of the, of the plant. Uh, total taxes, potential to be evaded will be a hundred and two thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight. Total taxes to be paid over those five years will be a hundred and five thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-one dollars.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Fielding? Seeing none, it would now move to the public hearing. Those who would like to speak in favor, please come forth. Those who would like to speak in opposition, please do likewise. Public hearing is closed. Move for adoption.
Second.
Mr. Woody, please take the roll. Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
Dr. Furley?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Dieter?
Aye.
And President Albert?
Aye.
Nine ayes. Thank you. Um, now, Mr. Woody, could you read Resolution fourteen thirty-four?
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as twenty-one fifteen West Western Avenue, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal[1738.13] Western Avenue, An Economic Revitalization Area For Purposes Of A Five-Year Personal Property Tax Abatement For IRB and Foods.
Mr. Councilman Gavin Furley, could you please give us your report in your committee?
Yes, community investment. That today, we send this forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Now can we have the presenter?
Most that we hear, both fourteen thirty-four and fourteen thirty-five together, will be voted on separately for each one.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Thank you.
Fourteen thirty-five. A Resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend Designating Certain Areas Within the City of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as twenty-one fifteen West Western Avenue, An Economic Revitalization Area For Purposes Of A Two-Year Real Property Tax Abatement For IRB and Foods.
Thank you. Mr. Gavin Furley, could you also give us a report regarding Bill fourteen thirty-five?
Yes, we sent both fourteen thirty-five forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Now can we have a presenter to cover the presentation for fourteen thirty-four and fourteen thirty-five together? Mr. Fielding?
First reading of the resolution, fourteen floors of the building. Before you have two resolutions for what is operating now as IRB and Foods on Western, this is a company that in partnership with Greg Pink and the Chamber of Commerce, they were able to incentivize to move here to South Bend. They did move in to the former ABC Supply Building, which has been vacant for many years along the way. They're making space for the building and also adding equipment. And we have offered them a two-year, under the state statute, six dash one point one, we offer them a two-year vacant building abatement. Total taxes that will be paid would be seven thousand five hundred and ninety-two over the two years. Total taxes that will be debated will be thirteen dollars one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. It would create thirteen jobs at the plant. The plan to invest approximately six hundred and twenty thousand dollars in personal property over the next two years. We've offered, we've offered a five-year tax abatement on the personal property. The total taxes to be debated at twenty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Total taxes to be paid at twenty-eight thousand ninety-four dollars. And again, the thirteen jobs that you can probably get at an average wage of, the company indicates nineteen dollars a job.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Fielding?
No.
Seeing none, here again, at this time, we are opening up the public hearing. Those who'd like to speak in favor, Bill fourteen thirty-four or fourteen thirty-five, please come forth. Those who'd like to speak in opposition of any one of these two bills, please come forth. Public hearing is now closed. Mr. Worthy, would you please step to the row?
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Dieter.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
And President Albert.
Aye.
And aye for adoption of fourteen thirty-five, second.
Mr. Worthy, would you please step to the row?
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
And President Albert.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Now, Mr. White, could you please read Resolution fourteen thirty-six?
Resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend Designating Certain Areas Within the City of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as nineteen oh two West Sample, An Economic Revitalization Area For Purposes Of A Five-Year Personal Property Tax Abatement For Liquor Components Manufacturing Inc.
Councilman Gavin Furley, could you please give us a report in your committee?
Yes, we send this forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. And now presenter, Mr. Fielding, would you please come forth again?
First reading, Department of State, fourteen floors of the building. Before we have the resolution for personal property tax abatement for liquor components, liquids committed to investing approximately two points three million dollars in new equipment machinery at the plant and in the western, or central district, for the purposes of manufacturing and distribution. Total taxes could be paid over a five-year period will be fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and seven dollars. Total taxes to be debated will be fifty-two thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Total jobs could be created in the next year, a hundred and eighty. Total jobs over the next ten years, three hundred and seventy.
Thank you. All your work tonight. Any other questions for Mr. Fielding? You may have a seat. Now we are having a public hearing. Those who'd like to speak in favor of Bill fourteen thirty-six. Those who'd like to speak in opposition. The public hearing is now closed.
Second.
Mr. Worthy, would you please step to the row?
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Dieter.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
And Scott.
Aye.
And President Albert.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Now, please read Resolution fourteen thirty-seven.
A Resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Approving The Issuance Of Scrap Metal Job Dealer Recycling Operation Licenses For Calendar Year Twenty Fourteen Pursuant To Section fourteen four dash fifty-one of the South Bend Municipal Code.
Councilmember White, as well as Shea, could you please give us a report in your committee?
This was sent to the full council favorably.
Thank you, from personnel finance. Thank you. Now, Mr. Worthy, can you remain in your seat and give us your report?
Yes. This is an annual process. We go through the recommendation to issue licenses for these scrap metal dealers. Sixteen businesses applied for licenses this year. They met the criteria required by the inspection of the fire department, the neighborhood code enforcement department, and, and the police department. All sixteen approved inspection reports are on file in the city clerk's office and is our office's recommendation that these be issued.
Thank you. Any questions for, for Mr. Worthy?
No.
Seeing none? Yes, you do?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, we now go to our public hearing. Those who'd like to speak in favor, please come forth. Those who'd like to speak in opposition, do likewise. Close to the public hearing. Mr. Worthy, please step to the row.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Dieter.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
And President Albert.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Now we'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that fourteen thirty-eight be read. Suspend the rules so it can be read on the floor.
So, but all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
It is carried.
Mr. Worthy, could you please read Bill fourteen thirty-eight?
A Resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend Designating An Agent/Negotiator To Represent The Common Council And Addressing An Advisory City Negotiating Team For The Twenty-Fourteen Fire Department And Police Department Negotiations.
Okay, I guess I'm the presenter, or who's the presenter?
Here, I'll be the presenter. I'm asking the council to approve appointing Kathleen Sukansky Farron as the agent and chief negotiator for the upcoming negotiations with the fire and police department.
Thank you. Any questions from Vice President Dieter? Seeing questions? We now have public hearings. Those who'd like to speak in favor. Those who'd like to speak in opposition. Close public hearing. Do we have a second? A second? All in favor? I mean, Mr. Worthy, please step to the row.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Dieter.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
President Albert.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Worthy, could you have first reading to Bill twenty-six fourteen?
First reading on a bill, the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, mending chapter nine, article five of the South Bend Municipal Code By Including New Section nine dash thirty and titled "Village Fee Excessions For Emergencies Involved In Level Units Of Government" by Mutual and Local League.
Move to twenty-six fourteen and go to Health and Public Safety, section thirty. Reading on four twenty-eight.
All in favor, say aye.
All opposed, same side. It's carried. Now, Mr. Worthy, could you have a first reading for Bill twenty-seven fourteen?
First reading on a bill, naming resulting ordinance for property located at ten twenty-two Coffee Road Street, Councilmanic District Three, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Move that Bill twenty-seven dash fourteen be sent to area of plan.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. It's carried. Now, can you read, first reading for Bill twenty-eight fourteen?
First reading on a bill, naming resulting ordinance and requesting a special exception for property located at six oh five North Victory Road, South Bend, Indiana, Councilmanic District Four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's carried. Reading now, have a first reading for Bill twenty-nine fourteen?
First reading on a bill, the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, offering various city departments to accept payments by certain financial instruments including bank card and credit card and authorize fee and establish procedures for such usage.
Should that be credit card instead of credit card?
Yes.
Okay. Dan, can you make a move? Let's go into personnel finance for public hearing, second, third. Reading on four twenty-eight, second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. It's carried. Any unfinished business to come before the council?
Bill thirty-fourteen.
Thirty-fourteen.
Okay, before, thank you. We got a first reading on Bill thirty-fourteen, Mr. Worthy.
First reading on a bill, naming resulting ordinance for property located at seventeen oh seven South Bend Avenue, Councilmanic District Four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Give a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, any unfinished business?
Yes, sir. I just want to thank the council and also the parks department. This past Saturday, we had an opportunity to have a ceremony for C.B. Gavins Senior Field, which is the local, the Martin Luther King Junior Recreational Center, with the new refurbishment. It's the amenity out there for a softball field. A number of community people, leaders showed up and supported it. Charlie Adams, I think Chuck Freebie was there, Patrick Taylor from Mark Harmon, obviously the family from, of Mr. C.B. Gavins Senior was there as well. Mark Neal also participated. So Joe Nine's obviously been participating as well. I think that may be in it. So we started out first with the resolution, supported unanimously, carried over to the park department, park board. That resolution was coupled with their resolution, obviously passed through, and then the name was given for that particular field. They had their first game on that field that day as well. So it's a good thing. It was a great honor. And again, I would like, thank you for your support. And another failing will also thank you for your support for getting that, uh, done.
Good job, good job. Any other unfinished business?
Yeah, we received two memos, I think, to the full council in regards to privilege of the floor. One had to do with the complaint against former Chief Hurley of not obtaining any certification while he was the chief of police. We received documentation from the person who made that complaint. And now the city is waiting, I guess, to get their own documentation. Secondly, it had to do with complaints of double billing, and I didn't have a chance to read it all. So, and our attorney had a chance to read all of that. Update from the city attorney. Counsel?
Yes, second. The matter is still under investigation by a third party. And also the sewer insurance program policy was approved last fall. From the fourth public works was also set in hotels.
Anything else we would like to add to any of the other parts?
Not this. Before we have the privilege of the floor, I forgot to do it under appropriate implication. Just for those of you who have not heard, again, just to take time to set up words of prayer for the family of one of our persons that passed away, Jeff Givney. And I wanted to make sure that we understood he is a dedicated worker to our city. And of course, it's been announced that he passed away at age sixty-four. So keep his family in prayers. Hopefully we can get something out to the family on behalf of the council. Now we have privilege of the floor. Mr. Scott from our First District Councilman, could you please give everybody their three minutes? And those who'd like to speak, can you come up and get as close to the mic as you can so we all can hear you?
Just your second accent.
Jesse Davis, P.O. Box ten two oh five, South Bend, Indiana. I just was, had a couple questions. We've seen a lot of things about the violence. We've got the same type of violence campaign, invested some dollars in the shot spotter. We had a gentleman, I don't recall his name, but he was here from Chicago to speak about violence in this program that the mayor's been looking into. I sat in on it, and I just found it kind of funny and alarming. And at the same time, I had a gentleman come in from Chicago, when a couple weeks prior to him coming in here, Chicago had forty-some shootings in one weekend, and several people dead from those shootings. So apparently, whatever they're doing there, it's giving a firm number to show that their crime has dropped. I guess one of my questions here in town, I read that there was approximately nineteen humans on the streets at any given time. I was just curious, if we've got nineteen humans on the street, how many actual sworn officers are on duty on every shift? And of those officers that are on patrol cars, where are they at? What are they doing? You know, do we have any of these CBO officers? We used to see those cars run quite frequently during the daytime and stuff. Are they out? I know they're volunteers, but are they watching neighborhoods, watching any areas, reporting back to the police department? And I've got a lot of calls in the last week or so about squad cars that just sit idle in a parking spot or in a parking lot for extended period of time while they're on shift. Well, if a citizen was paying for an officer to be on duty, and he has a beat that he should be, an area he should be in, then why are we sitting in cars and watching cars idle? If you're gonna burn the fuel anyway, it makes much more sense to burn that fuel to the neighborhood you belong in and make your presence known there. Because if I'm a criminal and I'm walking down the street and I'm gonna break into someone's house, let's say like a fortis the other day, if I see a squad car, I'm gonna be much less apt to try to open that front door. And if I see a squad car in that neighborhood every day and every evening during each police shift, then guess what? I'm gonna find somewhere else to commit my crimes. Thirty seconds. I think it's very important that we are, I guess, seen more in the neighborhoods. I don't care if it's out there on the floor, some other officers are. But if we're sitting idle somewhere, we're not doing the job that we should be doing, and we're not in the area we should be, and we're not as visible as we think.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Senator Brown, against citizens' rights of our government. I'm speaking on behalf of some of the violence and stuff that we have in, in our city. I know that there's somebody that just really conspired about it, especially when they lost their baby. I consider the kid a baby, because it was only two years old. Nobody really had an answer. You know, we do. It's like, I was talking to a lot of people, seeing like, everybody says shooting this, shooting that. I don't think nobody had an answer. I've seen councilmen say that it's a community thing. Yeah, it is. But we got to get it cool. And it's not as easy to be thankful. Because a lot of these kids with their handguns, they're not really in here. We don't have connection building, we don't have no family here. They can go out to the big city, from Detroit, Chicago, uh, Indy, uh, Turkey. And they're setting up camp down in South Bend places and trying to bring, make some waves with their handguns here. I don't have a wants a meter. So you can't give up on it. You gotta keep working together. You can't pull a fan in the van. The prison's always doing exile. We can't rain, the council, we can't rain, the mayor's off. You gotta come together and get some concrete ideas on how we can get this thing in, right here. And the one thing, maybe lunchtime, I was up there on our, our, the road track, I'm working with my boys, and I just wanted to get a glass. And then you put up your pops, rock the pop, do your road track, that's. And today, I actually have a little video camera working. What do you care? You just want to rock the pop, just go and, you need anything. I mean, they just don't care. And it's gonna be easy for me to, you're a camera out there, you're up in there, in the light, in that other door, and then you'll, you'll see it for yourself. That's gotta stop. It's about two twelve, Mrs. Park. But, the other thing I want to talk about, we got a group of kids, uh, out of the Robinson Center, and for who to do it for, they have to understand Iraq, where we went. You know, kids, they left you a park up on Hollow Street.
Thirty seconds.
Yes.
Oh, anyway, these kids, uh, uh, thirteen years old, not in any group, and they left us to redo this park up there. I think it probably named it's Tella.
Tella, oh, bruh.
Tella Park. You know what? These kids are really excited about it, because I guess they're And these kids are really excited, because like this, literally front lawn, this is like the park, you're going to use your cars, and you're going to play, they're already going to have a safe place.
Time's up.
Okay. But, uh, they're still listening to me, and, uh, because people work there on this way.
Thank you. Mr. Gaines.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines, that's very nice. Continue a little bit with the, uh, the Brown estate, because that Kelly Park is in our neighborhood, kids are excited, there are some plans being made, I was at Northeast Neighborhood Center, meeting today when we heard an update on, you know, what's in place and what the park, the park is going to do. And I just urge all of you who have a chance to support this in whatever way, um, find out what it is and help. Violence does have to stop. I was able to stop some violence on High Street many years ago, probably twenty years ago, just because I heard a loud argument, I heard threats, I called the police department, it's been a couple of minutes, there were several, a lot of times they were mostly unmarked, and when the people came back, they were speeding away, they came back, the officers were already there, and guns, uh, they never got fired, because I heard an argument, I would say that's nothing that we all, that we didn't see something going on, and you hear noise, so maybe it's legitimate noise, but, um, you could tell the difference, call. Look wait till it stops ringing out. And on a lesser note, tell them to move that car to that clock, it's not really, but I think somebody should put in a work order to whoever it is, uh, so you could direct somebody to make a work order to, and after to, uh, put the clock on the right time and